Yes, President.
President, Councilor Nett, absent. Councilor Mathieu.
Present.
Present. And Councilor Alonsug.
Present.
Present.
All right. First thing on the agenda?
We have order that various rusted, obsolete, unusable miscellaneous equipment and pots currently being stored at the DPW Yard at 250 Commercial Street are declared to be surplus public property with their de minimis value and allow for the disposition thereof in a commercially reasonable fashion in a manner consistent with the written policies of the Purchasing Department for surplus supplies with a resale or salvage value of less than $10,000.
Attorney Madam, is this the same as last time that they're getting?
It was going to be placed on the agenda for the last meeting. The mayor's office asked to hold off to do some more research on exactly what... I believe the mayor went down there with Mark King and Andy Hall, did a tour and saw that this... These pots are unusable. They're not capable of being used on existing vehicles.
Okay.
So the mayor's office gave the blessing to... And I know Mark King and Andy Hall are eager to try to clean up the DPW garage area.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Councilor Jakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nett, absent. Councilor Mathieu?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Alonsug?
Yes.
Yes.
No other business?
No other business.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm bringing the Veterans Committee meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor McLean?
Present.
Present. Councilor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Councilor Field, absent. Councilor Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Councilor Meany, absent.
Okay, so we're going to start off this Veterans Committee meeting by announcing our upcoming Resource and Community Fair that's going to be happening on November 13th at the Lynn Housing Authority from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. All of the community is welcome, and this is organized by our very own City Council Veterans Committee. So thank you guys for agreeing to do this with me. And after that, I would like to call our VSO to the microphone. Mike, so you need to give us an update on what's been going on in the Veterans Department.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me here. As you mentioned, on the 13th, it's going to be a great day for the Benefits Fair over at the Housing Authority sponsored by this body. And I would be remiss if I didn't beat the drum for our Veterans Day program. 8:30, it starts at 8:30 for the breakfast in the foyer on November 11th. And at 10:00 a.m., we're going to have the ceremony in the foyer. I really hope we can have a good turnout for that. On Thursday, November 6th, we invite anyone Marines or has family coming down. There'll be another birthday celebration in the foyer for the 250th Birthday of the United States Marine Corps, just like last week we celebrated the 250th Birthday of the Navy. And my particular favorite, this June, we celebrated the 250th Anniversary of the Army. One thing I was going to say too, I want to make sure real quick we bring up, on November 9th, the Knights at Columbus host their Veterans Appreciation Day Mass and Breakfast. And so anyone that's going to be... Starts at 8:00 a.m. The mass will be at St. Joseph's and the complimentary breakfast to follow at 9:45 at Knights at Columbus. They do this every year. It's a great event, and honestly, I think we should probably beat the drum better to get more people to come out to that. I know it's a busy, busy time, but I want to make sure that they do such good work. We want to make sure that they know about it. And if I could close, I want to make sure we've had a lot of... I wouldn't say a lot, but we've had some phone calls. We did a good job putting out the information, and I thank you for helping us push it out, too. In terms of the government shutdown, the VA has told us that it is not, at this particular time, impacting anything involving claims. Claims are being processed normally. There is a cutback on outreach and things like that, but if there's anything else, we'll be happy to push that out. But I want to make sure people don't think that the paperwork descending in is getting lost. If people do have any questions, please let us know. We can be reached at 781-586-6911. Other than that, are there any questions?
Do you guys have any questions, committee members?
Questions?
No? All right, well, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming out and giving us that update.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, Mike, before you go. Do you have anything from the Lynn Veterans Council? I see they're not here today, so anything for them?
I really... Thank you. I was remiss in that. We have a parade coming next September 20th, that annual parade. In fact, this weekend, there was a fundraiser up at Giggles where they raised some good money for it. It's supposed to be... From there, we're having meetings every week. In fact, tomorrow night, there's another parade meeting. Anyone who wants to be involved should reach out to the Lynn Veterans Council, or again, can reach out to my office or anyone around here. We're hoping to have... It's going to be the same. If people remember back in 2013 and 2018, we had that big parade going down Westin Ave. We're going to do that again. It's going to be a great day. It's the 25th Anniversary of 9/11, and it's also the 250th Birthday of the country. And so it's going to be a Veterans and First Responders Parade, so we're really looking forward to having a great turnout for that. It's 10 months or 11 months, comes real fast, so we're going to need all the help we can get.
And do you have any copies of those flyers for the committee, for the council?
I can email them out. I have copies right here, but I'll email them to you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and next we have our GAR curator, Wendy Joseph, to come up.
Thank you, Nicole. Hello, everyone. So I was asked to give an update on the GAR project, and I want to make sure that everyone knows this is my update. This is not anyone else's. This is my own personal situation here. I can report the elevator project is making a determined effort to reach completion, but it has been extremely difficult to track the actual progress. I was not permitted on-site during construction, and construction meeting minutes ceased, being shared in the spring. As a result, I can only report on what I now see and am experiencing, much like the parable of the blind man, each describing a different part of the elephant. Upon returning to the GAR building, I began by cleaning the small areas I needed in order to work, removing layers of dirt and grimy construction dust. Beyond those limited spots, the building remains coated with the residue of a year and a half of heavy construction, embedded in every surface, crevice, and artifact. While zipper dust barriers were used, they were limited to three locations. In Masonite was eventually placed on some floors and stairways, but not before extensive dust migration had already occurred. This dust has settled on World War I museum artifacts that are stored in the kitchen, speech which I was explicitly told would remain untouched during construction. Despite that assurance, the kitchen sink was used as a slop sink. I personally removed a mop saturated with concrete from it. Had I been allowed access to do my job, I would have directed workers to the proper utility sink. Artifacts in the Spanish-American War Room, also stated to be outside the construction zone, were moved without supervision or permission. White plaster dust footprints now mark the red velvet of antique benches over a century old. These items were never meant to be disturbed. In the curator's office, four large bookcases filled with Civil War volumes are covered in dust and will need to be cleaned individually and with the utmost care. In reality, the construction zones were greatly expanded beyond original plans. Zipper barriers were unzipped for convenience, turning my office into a corridor for workers. The Lincoln and Grant Library, home to original terrazzo floors, and the historic built-in bookcase, was used as a workroom. Antique furniture was pushed aside to make space for a full-size table saw, which operated there for some time before protective measures were placed on the floor. The bookcase was never covered. Promises to preserve antique lighting and antique door hardware were not upheld. The lighting fixtures were discarded, and antique door hardware was found in the trash. Not all pieces were recovered, but enough were found to reveal how city property was being treated. Finished paintwork has been evaluated by an ad hoc committee and received a grade of D. The building's landline has been dead since my return. Elevator phone lines had failed inspection. A window remains broken in one construction room. Several windows removed for loading material have not been reinstalled with the finishing stops, so that the windows still swing inward. Some lights now cannot be turned off at any switch. The main entrance glass door remains unrepaired after the Lynn Fire Department had to force entry during a false alarm, because the standard fire department access key box was never installed. There is strong pressure to issue certificates and finalize the punch list, but the larger question that everyone wants to know remains: When can we truly reopen? Before reopening, the building will require a comprehensive floor-to-ceiling cleaning across four levels. Only then can the trustees and I confront the new and significant space challenges resulting from the elevator installation. What was once exhibit spaces now house large elevators and accessible restrooms. I've been told that I may hang pictures on the walls of these rooms, as though the public has no need to see those dusty old artifacts that once filled our display cases. But where then are these artifacts to go? A second-floor room, once slated for rental use, is now filled with antique exhibit cases, flags, crates, packing materials, and artifacts, including items on loan from the Naval History and Heritage Command in Washington, DC. The grand hall now resembles the final scene from Raiders of the Lost Ark. Rows of displaced artifacts, all awaiting a place to belong, once proudly exhibited and now without a home. The work ahead is not only about cleaning and repairing a building, it is about restoring trust, safeguarding irreplaceable history, and honoring the veterans whose stories we are trying to preserve. I urge all responsible parties to recognize that reopening the GAR is not simply a matter of certificates and timelines, but of stewardship. We must ensure that the facility is not only functional, but worthy of its legacy, before we welcome the public again. With the proper support, we can recover what has been compromised. Without it, the collections will remain at risk, and the mission of the GAR Museum will remain diminished. I ask for your partnership in restoring this historic institution to the condition that our veterans and our community deserve. I will take questions.
Yes, I had a question. Is this contractor still on-site? And who is the general contractor?
General contractor is Bill Dandrio. He is on record as being on-site.
All right. Now, who is overseeing this project for the city?
I would say Laura Stockfish had some part in it, but it was... She was taking care of the stuff that officially had to go on, doing an excellent job, because we are kind of still on schedule.
All right, now, my third question is, why were you not allowed on-site as the curator of the GAR?
I would like perhaps see if you would like to speak on that?
I was not involved in that decision. I would venture to guess that there could be liability issues in an active construction site, that nonessential personnel that weren't part of the inspection. But I'm only speculating on that point.
All right, thank you.
So as far as I was told, I was told that I wasn't on ISD or the city's insurance, and I wasn't on the contractor's insurance.
Right, thank you. Maybe you can follow up with an email to this committee, send it to the chair, Councilor McLean, and we can look into some of this stuff and just see how we can get... You know, the GAR is a place that everyone is happy to go to and looking forward to it opening back up and just hearing these conditions that it's in now. And from your voice shaking, obviously you care about what's going on over there. And we have to figure out how to get this back and give you the assistance that you need. But as you stated, a lot of this work is going to be detailed work, like basic little things like taking care of a couple artifacts is going to take some time, because you have to be very gentle and very care of what you do with those. So we just want to make sure you include us in on the email, and we can try to figure out how we can assist you to try to get this moving along the right way and the legal way, so, all right?
And I believe Councilor McLean has some follow-up with some ideas as well.
Yes, I do have some words to enter into the record in support of the GAR. So, dear Mayor Nicholson and council colleagues, I am writing to highlight the importance of supporting the ongoing renovation efforts at the Grand Army of the Republic GAR Museum here in Lynn. Built in 1885 by members of the General Frederick W. Lander Post 5, this Romanesque building stands as a lasting tribute to Lynn's Civil War veterans. Notable members include 10 African-American veterans of Post 5, including three from the 54th Massachusetts Regiment. At a time when Jim Crow was entrenched across the country, including in the North, Post 5 took a stand by integrating the Post. Post 5 was among the very first integrated organizations in the city. Seven members of Post 5 went on to become mayors of Lynn. These men gave both their service and their vision to ensure this museum could preserve their legacy. The GAR Museum is not only one of the largest of its kind ever built, it is also one of the last remaining GAR halls in the entire country, still standing with its original purpose intact. That makes it a rare treasure for Lynn, the Commonwealth, and the nation. As renovations progress, there are a few pressing needs I believe deserve our collective attention. Artifact preservation and storage. With the installation of an elevator to make the museum accessible for residents with disabilities, which was a critical and commendable improvement, valuable exhibit space has been reduced. As a result, many artifacts can no longer remain permanently on display. It is essential that we brainstorm and implement a sustainable storage solution that ensures these artifacts are properly preserved and rotated into exhibits, so that the public continues to have access to the full breadth of the museum's collection. Volunteer support. At this stage of the renovation, the museum is in disarray due to a lack of storage space. The curator is working diligently, but additional hands will be needed. I asked that we work together to prioritize these needs, supporting both the curator and the museum's long-term sustainability. Thank you for your consideration. Do we have any other words from the committee? What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. That concludes this committee meeting.
Welcome to the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Madam Clerk, please roll call.
Council Field absent. Council Hogan.
Yes. Present.
Council Net.
Present.
Present. Council Alonso.
Present.
Present. Council Mejimadre.
Present.
Okay, we have a new taxi operator, Felipe Batia, 34 Broad Street.
Mr. Batia is here. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Great. Any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
None? That license is granted and is ready in the clerk's office.
Right here, so...
Okay, we have a second taxi operator, Jimmy Guzman, 347 Chester Street.
Mr. Guzman is here. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion or questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed?
No.
That license is also granted and is ready in the clerk's office.
Okay. We have a new second-hand article license at 391 Chatham Street, The Appliance Place. Sarah Paulino is the owner.
Is Ms. Paulino here?
Ms. Paulino here?
Ms. Paulino isn't currently not here.
Chatham Street. Are you Chatham Street, please?
Just one more call. Ms. Paulino, are you here? What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table is non-debatable and granted.
Thank you.
And we have signed renewals.
Signed renewals. Is there a motion to take them as a whole?
Yes. Motion, take them as a whole, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are all granted. Thank you. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion adjourned. Second.
We are adjourned.
What's the wish, committee?
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
What is the wish, committee?
We have ordered that his honor, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an M O U with the Secretary of State of Commonwealth of Massachusetts to purchase software licenses to assist in the conducting of census. City is hereby authorized to enter into a five-year contract to own the R G I S software for a period of five years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Council Walsh.
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 Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Our election warrant, please. We have ordered that the city clerk be directed to advertise meetings of the qualified voters of the city of Lynn to be held in several polling places designated by the warrant for the local election on Tuesday, November 4, 2025. The polls will be opened at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Votes will be cast for mayor, council lodge, ward council, and school committee. Sample ballots for all wards and precincts are available on the city website and in the election office for public viewing. The ward and precinct locations are Ward One, Precinct One, Shoemaker School; Ward One, Precinct Two, Three, and Four; System School; Ward Two, All; St. Pious; Ward Three, Marshall Middle School; Ward Four, Harrington School; Ward Five, Lynn Tech Annex; Ward Six, Lynn Tech Fieldhouse; and Ward Seven, Breed Junior High.
What's the wish, committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Field absent.
Yes.
Any emergency, Mr. Comptroller? No emergency. What is the wish, committee?
Motion adjourned. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Me and my wife. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 14th council meeting to order. Roll call please.
Counselor Allen Sog?
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudis?
Present.
Present Counsel Field absent, Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present Counsel Matul?
Present.
Present Counsel McLean?
Present.
Present Counsel Meany?
Present.
Present Counsel Mejimadre?
Present.
Present Counsel Net?
Present.
Present Counsel Walsh?
Present. We all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. President, special prayer for Counsel Meany's mom, Grace Meany.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in thy name. We accept the minutes of September 23rd. We have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion accepted.
President Walsh?
We're going to suspend the rules, I think, Counsel Meany, if you want to come up for a second. Up to the podium.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am here to present a presentation for a couple heroes around us. I'd first like to call up Chief Sullivan and John Tebow as a representative from the mayor's office. Let's keep it going. John Tebow. Paging John Tebow. So today I would like to acknowledge two heroes amongst our Lynn community, the Ward 1 community, the Lynn community as a whole. Their names are Charlotte and Justin. In the early morning of October 9th, at 6:00 a.m., they alerted their parents of a fire in their home, saving for sure their parents' lives, their own lives, the lives of Stanley the Cat and Ruby the Dog. And it's just so refreshing to know that our young people are aware and educated and trained enough to alert emergency services when an emergency happens. So I would like to please give a warm round of applause and welcome Charlotte and Justin Van Dear. Read it. Everyone in this community is grateful, owes you a debt of gratitude, your parents, your family, your community, everyone. Once again, I'd just like to give you a huge round of applause. We are so proud of you and so proud of what you've done.
Please. I'm Justin Madore. When the fire happened, I was the only one up, and I ran downstairs to check on it and got the cat and brought him up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the council for hosting us. It is my distinct honor to be able to present this citation on behalf of the mayor's office to Justin and Charlotte. We are so proud of your bravery and your quick thinking to protect your family and your pets and just not only want to make sure that you know how proud we are and how grateful we are for your heroic actions, but also that folks know about it because it's such a wonderful example to inspire that kind of service-minded thinking in the whole city. So on behalf of the city of Lynn, being known the mayor, Jared C. Nicholson hereby extends his most sincere congratulations to Charlotte and Justin in recognition of your quick-thinking heroic actions which helped protect your family and pets during a life-threatening situation. Thank you so much.
Right photo. If any of the family members or friends want to come forward, take pictures, come on up, we'll do pictures of our colleagues if they want to come up. So I'd just like to say myself, I personally could not be more proud as a father of my children right now. In a moment of crisis, they knew exactly what to do. They did not hesitate, they did not panic, they reacted perfectly. I've known many grown adults that would shy away in that situation, they did not. This young man stood up and proved who he really is, that he does have what it takes in a crisis. Both of them did. I'd also like to extend my public thanks to the Lynn Fire Department. Their response was incredible. I talked to two friends of mine who've seen pictures of the fires, they're longtime firefighters, and both of them said it is absolutely incredible, given the minimum response time from Wyoma Square to our house, that the damage was contained to what it was. And that is exclusively thanks to Lynn Fire Department. Thank you, sir. Just come on up a little closer, come up to the podium. Good job, media. All righty, moving right along here. We have communications.
We have communications from his honors, the mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Michael Solona, 139 Woodlawn Street, to serve on the Water and Sewer Commission effective immediately. His term will expire on June 30th, 2028.
So I think we want to take this one separately from the other ones, is that, well, does the council want to take these as a whole? You can take this as a whole. You want to take them all as a whole? Okay. We have a motion to, we'll read them all off and take them as a whole then.
I am also appointing, making reappointments effective immediately. Pam Edwards, 41 Ocean Street, to the Council on Aging. Her term will expire on August 9th, 2031. Patty Pendexter, 40 Sutcliffe Road, to the G.A.R. Board of Trustees. Her term will expire on April 1st, 2028. To the Library Board of Trustees, Harry McCabe, 16 Reservoir Road. His term will expire on April 1st, 2028. Alicia Bingham, 1 Carroll Way. Her term will expire on April 1st, 2028. Andrea Williams, 38 Endicott Street. Her term will expire on April 1st, 2028. Sincerely, Mayor Jared C. Nicholson.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Second, discussion, Counsel Lapierre.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of background on the Solona appointment, I had a cordial discussion with Mr. Solona yesterday on the phone, and I would just say that during the duration of Mayor Nicholson's term, these are very rare, these reappointments, that they do not come before us before a term has expired. This is a late reappointment, as I could see dated September 22nd, but not before us until October 14th, and I believe Mr. Solona's term expired on June 30th of this year. And I think that's significant by way of which things unfolded in his position as a commissioner at the Lynn Water and Sewer. They had a really big, I would say, an approval of a new director after, you know, a former employee was there for almost 40 years. And I would say a magnitude of that appointment in itself, I would have preferred to see Mr. Solona's name come before this council prior to June 30th. And I just feel like every other appointment has been before this council in a timely manner. This one in particular had not, or did not. And I understand that the process, and we have commissioners who are appointed by this council, and the mayor has appointments that are appointed to the commission as well, but they are protected. but they are protected with, or their charges, as I view it, being a longtime, lifelong resident really of the city, is to protect the ratepayers of the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission. That is paramount, that is primary. Now, they do have other functions, and I'm sure that they were deliberate in their actions in appointing a new director, who will begin their tenure very soon, I'm sure. However, it just doesn't sit well with me that this appointment is coming to us in October of this year than, rather than prior to June 30. So I could go on and on about the process and what transpired, and people who have been watching it unfold may have seen it publicly because everything was in the public eye, but I want to caution the commissioners that we appoint and the other commissioners as well, that, again, to repeat, protecting the water and sewer ratepayer is the primary function. And what I'm getting at is, from what I'm understanding, the outgoing director, who was a career person, made a pretty significant salary at the Water and Sewer Commission. And, and the salary should be obviously negotiable, it's a non-union contract. As a management contract, I hope that the commissioners will do their due diligence to bring in this new director at a better price tag than our former director. This person is coming from the outside of the city of Lynn, he is not a Lynn resident. And I do not think that in, in terms of, and I know it's a personnel matter, so I'm not going to go as far as to what might transpire in terms of contracts and such, and I know the legal council is here as well, but I just cannot see, I'll just put it out as a general statement, that folks who have not contributed as an employee to the city of Lynn by way of continuous service to our city or in city agency, in this case, the Lynn Water and Sewer, be eligible for beyond the base salary in terms of their, their remuneration, their compensation. So as rates tick up, because we have the CSO in West Lynn, we've had a 30-year rate increase from the CSO of East Lynn way back when, 1995, I believe, but our water bills are significantly higher. Every quarter, we are paying more, and I just feel like a new person comes in, they ought to be paid justly and fairly, but not in addition to their base compensation. So I would hope that the commissioners reflect upon that, and I hope their deliberations go well. But again, I just want to reiterate the fact, and no one has given me an answer as to why this appointment is coming before us this evening. I've asked that question, but I cannot get an answer as to why this couldn't have transpired back in April or May like other appointments expired in June of this year. So I will leave it at that, Mr. President, and thank you.
All right, any other comments, Council Meaney?
Is, is there a way that we could separate this? Because there's, I mean...
I already, I already asked that. We said no as a council, took them as a whole.
Well, I just don't want it to come off that I don't support some of these candidates.
I get it, but we took them as a whole. It's already been voted on. That's why I asked in the beginning.
Okay. I guess...
Council Alonson.
Thank you, Mr. President. In my capacity as the appointed City Council Representative to the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission Board, I have seen firsthand Mike Salona's leadership and dedication as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Salona has degrees in environmental science and environmental policy. He has over 20 years of professional experience in the water quality field. He has served as Vice President of the Friends of Lynn and Hahn Beach for the past 20 years, and has brought marine science education to several Lynn elementary schools and coordinated environmental internships for Lynn High School students. He is exceptionally qualified to serve on the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission Board. To the public who's listening now and watching, the Lynn and Water Sewer Commission was created in 1982 by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Enabling Act of 1982, Chapter 381. The Enabling Act governs the actions of the commissions and states. The powers of the commission shall be exercised by a five-member Board of Commissioners. It also states that the executive director shall be hired by the board and shall direct an affairs of the commission as authorized and approved by the Board of Commissioners. After 20 years, Mr. President, as executive director, Mr. Dan O'Neill retired from the commission. The board voted unanimously, let me reiterate, the board voted unanimously to hire the Edwards Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston to assist the board in research process for a new executive director. The board voted to advertise the position and publicly interviewed three candidates for the position. The search process was open, fair, and transparent. Majority of the board voted to hire Mr. James Arsenault. Mr. Arsenault was the former DPW Director for the City of Braintree and has experience with other Massachusetts municipalities and leadership positions. I don't understand why some of my colleagues may have reservations approaching the mayor's reappointment of Mr. Salona. Mr. Salona's unique qualification is why I will proudly vote for his appointment to the commission's board. I ask you, my colleagues, to approve Mr. Mayor, the mayor's reappointment of Mike Salona to the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission Board and Commissioners. And also, for this behalf, I would like to address my colleague, Mr. Lapiers' question about longevity, all of that stuff. We did not even met yet and have this conversation. Our meeting was supposed to be last Monday, but we had, we had a TV, an interview, so that's why they did not vote it, and there was no conversation. Rest assured, Council Lapiers, we will take your recommendations into consideration, and we will have that when we, the commissioners that are appointed by this body, including myself, will have the due diligence to have that conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council Meaney.
Because we have to vote them all as a group, I just wanted noted for the record that if Mike Salona's appointment was individual, that I would have to vote no, I cannot support it under such circumstances.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Council Lapiers?
I would offer an amendment to our original of appointing all, and I would offer an amendment to take them up individually if the council would second it.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Roll call, I mean, not roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we separated them? So we have, we make a motion to approve Mike Salona. We have that from somebody?
A motion to approve Mike Salona's for reappointment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field absent? Council Hogan?
Present.
Council Lapiers?
No.
Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean?
No.
Council Meaney?
No.
No. Council Mejimadre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries for appointment. Do we have a motion to approve the other, the other batch of people being appointed?
Motion to approve the rest of the appointment.
Second? All right, roll call.
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field absent? Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapiers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes. Council Meaney?
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes. All right, appointments are reappointed. We have council reappointments? Did we do those already?
We did them all.
Those were all in one piece? Okay. Public hearings.
We have 38 Exchange Street, Unit 1B, petition of Trixys Morales Coronado, owner of Trixie's Nails and Supply, for sign permit.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, come on up to the podium. How you doing? Just give us your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Juliana Peneche. My address is 98 Western Avenue in Lynn. I'm here in possession, representation of Trixie's Breck. She's currently on a work trip, and it's for her business sign. It's a new business.
All right, thank you. Just have a seat. If any questions by anybody, we'll have you come back up, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, seeing on that part of the hearing is closed? Anybody in opposition to this? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council, Council Chakudis?
I have their plans for the sign. It actually looks really nice, adds to that area. I'm motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Roll call? Or, sorry, discussion on that? Roll call?
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field absent? Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapiers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes. Council Meaney?
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes. All, all set, the passes. Yep, thank you. Next public hearing.
517 Lineway, petition of Melina Polanco, owner of Mel's Tire and Auto Service, for permission to have an auto repair flammable license for full service repairs at 517 Lineway.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. With me is Melina Polanco. Melina operates three businesses in Lynn. She wants to keep the business that she has in Lynn at 517 Lineway, and to do so, she needs your help. She's been before the mayor's development team on a couple of occasions. The most recent change in the zoning ordinance assisted her in this desire because it's now an industrial district, and with the council consent for a special permit, she'd be able to engage in auto repair. But the auto repair that she wants is only related to her business, which is selling and servicing tires. I think you have a letter from the EDIC and the chairman of the mayor's committee with respect to the restrictions and stipulations. What she wants is a fair chance. She wants to be able to compete with the big tire companies. To do so, she needs to be able to not only sell tires, but to service people and mount and do those things that relate to tires. And with your approval, she'd be able to continue this business in Lynn. As I say, she's got two other businesses. They provide jobs for people in Lynn, and she's made a tremendous investment in both effort and money to keep this business thriving in Lynn, but she needs your help.
All right, thank you very much. Have a seat. If there's any other questions, we'll have you guys come back up. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Cowdell, the Executive Director of EDIC. I reside here, Mary Ellen Drive, in Lynn. I just want to say on behalf of the development team, we did submit a letter in support. I want to give a big shout out to the Ward 6 Councilor. He was involved in several meetings, worked very hard in support of this project. So I'm just here very briefly to say that this is a good project for the city of Lynn, and I'm here in support.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. Now, here's another small business that, if you've noticed, every time they move, they move to a bigger place, they got a better curb appeal presence, and I'm a big advocate for focusing, and this isn't too far from the alley and Bennett Street corridors where there's a lot of alternatives to the dealers for repairs and auto body shops, et cetera. So when I have tires replaced, sometimes I'm sent away because they have to, before they do alignment and put the tires on, they have to have a mechanic do some other related things. Now, if that's all they're looking for, this is good. This is one-stop shopping, and it's just another good, small business perpetuating and expanding in our city. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor, seeing on that part of the hearing is closed? Anybody in opposition to this? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing on that part of the hearing is closed? What's the wish of the council? Council Hogan?
Before I make a motion to approve, I want to say, you know, she's been in business for a while when Mel's Tire was in Ward 6 down on Western Avenue. Now she's on the Lineway, which is a great location. Her shop is really clean and everything. I'm definitely going to make a motion to approve, but with the following stipulations that are labeled with the development team letter, so we're going to take those there. And the, the days here look like it's Monday through Saturday, so I'll make a motion to approve, so with the following stipulations from the development team and the days, Monday through Saturday, I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, a second.
Second.
Any other discussion on it? Roll call.
Council Alonson?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field absent? Council Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapiers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Matul?
Yes.
Yes. Council McLean?
Yes.
Yes. Council Meaney?
Yes.
Yes. Council Mejimadre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes. Carries. All right. Next item for public hearing.
We have a tax increment exemption agreement for 26 Farah Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Cowdell, the Executive Director of EDIC. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of 26 Farah Street. The development team had several meetings with the owner of the property. The development team, as you know, Mr. Chairman, is made up of the mayor, City Council Representative, in this case, Council Chakudis, ISD Director, Community Development Director, EDIC, Lynn Housing Planning, and so we're, we're all part of that meeting. This is a little bit over a $6 million investment. It will create 28 units in downtown. A local tax incentive is needed. In return, three units at this site will be affordable at 60% AMI. One unit at 87 Park Street will also become an affordable unit at 30% AMI. And kind of unique that in this situation, the city will be made whole from any lost tax revenue by approving a companion pilot program. This is being done so that the owner could then seek a state tax credit. Cannot seek that tax credit without getting the local tax credit. So it's really a win-win for us. We get four affordable units, three at, as I said, 60%, and one at 30%. We do not lose a penny in tax revenue. The pilot program that the Attorney La Manera is here to speak, if any questions, makes it clear that every dollar that would be given up on a tax incentive is recovered through that pilot program. So if you have any questions, myself, our Attorney La Manera is here. I wanted to speak in favor.
Council Lapiers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cowdell?
Yes.
Can you clarify a TIF versus this? Is that just that we're not losing any tax money with a TIF we do, and with this we don't?
Yeah. So generally speaking, when a tax incentive is given, the, the city is losing some tax dollars for, in a TIF, for instance, like Market Basket, Kettle Cuisine, you're creating jobs, and that's, that's what the council and the mayor and folks like me, it's a trade-off. This case here, there's really no trade-off. We are getting four affordable units. We are doing a tax incentive, but we're recovering those funds. So not really much for a trade-off. It's, it's, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lapiers.
Thank you. If you have a seat, if anybody else has a question, all right? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak in favor? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition to this that want to come on up? Give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Riff Daras, and I'm at Tacoma Street in Lynn, Ward 6. Last month, I was here before you to raise concerns about the detrimental effects and hardships I have personally suffered as a result of the inclusionary zoning fee ordinance applicability as it pertains to homeowner-occupied properties, where in my case, only one unit is being created. That night is when I learned about tonight's tax exception request, and, you know, I just heard Mr. Cowdell, who I do not know, who very well may be someone reputable in the community, I don't know. I'm not into politics. I work hard. I try to help my neighbors, and I work hard to do the best that I can and follow the rules. My intent and goal here is simple. It's to raise awareness about why working-class individuals striving to do the right thing and follow the rules must pay a fee unjustly, in my opinion, while pointing out a benefit to a developer who already receives benefits from the state and most likely the federal government, and now also the city. This is inequitable and a clear detriment to homeowners and homeowner-occupied projects such as mine, who are forced to pay, in my case, almost $12,000 to convert my single-family home to a two-family home. This is not smart, and it's counterproductive to the spirit of the housing Lynn plan, which is the impetus of the inclusionary zoning fee ordinance. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to remind you that it is the people, not corporations, not developers, that are the backbone of our community, okay? Lynn will succeed when we lift everyone, not only certain people, particularly those that stand to gain a significant big profit. that stand to gain a significant big profit. And rather than imposing fees on the little people, we should be more inclusive of trying to include them, to protect them. And so the strength of our city comes from being inclusive and supporting everyone who calls Lynn home. Because when we feel supported, we're more likely to contribute to our collective growth. And so for this reason, I oppose this, and I also urge you all to work together to amend the inclusionary zoning fee ordinance to exempt single-family and two-family homeowner-occupied properties. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C, where you guys have the power to pass a tax exception for all homeowner-occupied property owners, like 12 other cities have already done, that you please consider doing so. Because it is the equitable thing to do, particularly when homeowners like myself are being hit and developers are being given a tax break. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in opposition?
My name is Jen Forbes, and I'm her neighbor. I just want to speak on her behalf. She's a great neighbor, and paying $12,000 to add a basement apartment is absolutely ridiculous when developers are getting, what, seven-digit tax breaks? It doesn't make any sense. You have to make it make sense, and it doesn't.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition?
Hi, Joanne Lindner, 302 Linwood Street. I'm opposed to this. Years ago, the city was giving out TIFs, and we were promised on the last development, and I couldn't figure out which one it was, but we were promised you weren't going to give out TIFs anymore. Now, I heard the presentation. I don't think it was made clear how the city is going to be made whole. You know, you have to, he's being given this TIF to get a break from the state. Either way, it's us, the taxpayers. I don't know. I fear that we're going to have another 2018 situation on our hand, and I hope you, please, do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition?
My name is Colleen Biaz, and I'm from 10 Laurel Street in Muslin. And I'm also opposed to some, a developer getting a tax break, as if I wanted to convert my home, I then get classified as a developer, which is ridiculous that I, a working person, should have to pay the same or not get the same benefits that others do. Unfortunately, I've had other incidents where inspections and stuff, not everybody's treated fair in the city. I had an incident with a restaurant, you're well aware of, Mr. Walsh, with the old time, who went and built themselves this giant structure without a permit, and still till this day, there's an expired application. They were not fined, they paid no penalties, and the structure's still standing. So, you know, this city needs to start looking out for the people, us little taxpayers that don't make that much money, and start listening. Why should this guy get a tax break because he's giving you three units? If he was giving 50% of his building, maybe consider it, but he's not. He's still making a giant profit, and now he needs this tax break to get another tax break. When do we get a tax break?
All right.
So I'm opposed.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the councilor, Counselor Maggie Madri?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Second. Do we have discussion? I was going to have Jim La Mano come up, and maybe, Jim, if you could...
Just looking for the form of the motion. This is actually a tie agreement, not a TIF agreement. So the form of the motion I'd request is authorize, as honor the mayor, to enter into a tie agreement and a pilot agreement. The tie agreement will result in a tax break on the property. The pilot agreement will recapture the entirety of the tax break. So the city will, there'll be no negative loss of income through the five-year term of this agreement. Authorizing the mayor to sign both of those. If you only authorize one and not the pilot, it would be a tax break, and the city couldn't recapture what it was losing. If that's, if that's...
So do we have a motion to approve both of them at once?
Right.
Yes, a motion to approve both.
A motion to approve them both at once. Second. Any discussion from the council? I was just going to ask if Attorney La Mano could come up for a second. Jim, could, I don't know, I don't know, you or maybe Jim Caudell, can you just clarify how the money comes back to the city? I don't know who's more qualified for that part of it.
So we have negotiated with the assessors office, and I do not pretend to be good at math. I was told there was going to be no math on the bar exam, that's why I went to law school. There is a figure that, and it goes up, it goes down each of the five years. So it starts out at a get, the tax at 85%, 90%, and it eventually gets up to the full 100%. Whatever that figure is in each of the five years, the pilot agreement will plug in that number. So if it's 15% in year one, they have to return that 15% lost in taxes.
And the pilot program is a state program, just so...
It's a separate agreement between the city and the property owner. We have one with the VNA. They got a, that they're nonprofit, they wouldn't have to pay taxes. They agree to pay tens of thousands of dollars to the city, recognizing they get city services, and this developer understands that they're going to be getting city services for the 28 units at Farah.
Okay, all right. Counsel Lapierre?
Just for clarity, pilot is payment in lieu of taxes.
Correct. I should have said that.
That's what this is, we're doing, we're dealing with right now.
The second part, the second agreement is in payment in lieu of taxes to recapture what is lost.
Got you.
Thank you. Counsel Chakoudas?
I just have one thing to add to this, because it's happened to us before, and I would prefer this be put in. If they were to sell the property before that was paid back, full payment has to be made with the sale of that property.
That's correct. Is that the question? Yes.
That's, that's in the agreement.
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. Counsel Meany?
Yes, I'd like to call up Jim Caudell here for a moment. Could you please explain why a TIF is given to commercial property developments, please?
Thank you. I'll give you a couple of examples, Counsel. Number one, Market Basket. They will not go to any city unless the tax incentive is given, okay? So when we gave Market Basket a tax incentive, we had leverage at that point. Because of that negotiation with this body and Market Basket, 300 jobs were created, over 90% of them went to Lynn folks. So that's one reason. Kettle Cuisine is another company. They were in Chelsea, and so they were looking to expand. Every gateway city went after them. If we didn't offer a tax incentive, they never would have come to Lynn. And so because of that tax incentive, they came here with 98 jobs. Today, they have over 500 jobs. So I certainly have never said that I would not give out another tax incentive when it comes to commercial. Well, and I don't do residential, as you know, but on commercial development, it can be an effective tool. And hopefully, in return, we guarantee jobs for Lynn residents. And so that's why a tax incentive to commercial development is critical at certain points. Certainly not every time, but at certain points.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Counsel Lapierre?
I also have a question for our EDIC director. I know you don't have notes in front of you, but if you could refresh our memory on the Market Basket, is that coming to fruition soon? They've been there at least 10 years. I know it's incrementally going up. Do you recall the terms on that?
So Counselor, on a TIF, there's no standard amount of years. I want to preface my comments with that. The minimum amount of years is five, the maximum is 20, and each one is a little bit different. I believe Market Basket was a 15-year tax incentive.
Were you at that roughly?
So, I'm sorry.
Are we in year 10?
I think we're year 11. So, yeah, we, and we get annual reports verifying that the jobs are going to Lynn residents and so forth.
You're paying more incrementally.
Yeah, so they're, they're at about 80% now of taxes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field Apps and Counsel Hogan.
No.
No. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mathieu?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meany?
No.
Counsel Mejimadre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries. Next public hearing.
We have a proposed ordinance securing the rights of individuals seeking gender-affirming care and reproductive health care in the city of Lynn.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Jason Mao. I am a junior at Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy and a representative of the newly-founded advisory committee for the LPS District. And I am also a member of the Neighbor-to-Neighbor nonprofit organization, specifically the youth member engagement team. And I am accompanied by Gabe and Alan in the back over there. I just want to emphasize the importance of gender-affirming care as well as reproductive care, especially for the youth and for people like me, who were under the queer umbrella, as well as other students in Lynn who question whether or not they will be able to receive this care in the near future, given the national climate. And I believe that with this climate, it's very limited to how much education we are given, specifically the resources that we can get for sexual health services. So by this, I just want to hope and give my trust into the council to approve of this ordinance to help reassure the youth and pretty much the future about whether or not they can affirm themselves. I also want to emphasize that gender-affirming care is not for just people who are transgender like me, but also for everyone who may want to present more masculine or more feminine or even in between that with procedures or other therapies. So I hope that with this, the ordinance can be approved, and I believe that's the most that I can say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I would like to speak in favor only because I believe that inclusivity and representation of everyone is pivotable to a community and the strength of a community. And so anything that uplifts and bolsters an individual's authenticity is something that we should all be in support of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. Isaac Simon Hodges, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Lynn United for Change. We strongly support the ordinance, and I want to appreciate Counselor McLean for bringing this forward and for others who have supported it. We all know that we're in a moment in the history of this country where basic rights are under attack, our community's under attack for so many different reasons and so many different ways, and it's so good to see this body taking a step to affirmatively step forward and say, everyone in our community deserves basic respect and access to health care and basic human rights. And I just add that transgender people, LGBTQ folks, queer people of all backgrounds are part of our community, have always been part of our community, and I'll say in Lynn United for Change, have always been part of our organization. We are mostly known for fights around housing issues, and the, those same issues intersect with all segments of our community. And we've seen again and again, people from all backgrounds, including transgender folks, fighting alongside people of every other background to defend the human right to housing. And that's always been a point of pride in our group, that people may come from different places, may not have the same level of awareness of some of these issues, but they come together around their common human needs for something like housing and discover their commonalities. And we're here not, you know, not in spite of the fact that, that our focus may often be on other issues, but because this very much intersects with every single other issue that, that is affecting our community. So we strongly support this and appreciate the work going into it, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. And of course, this is the right thing to do. Way back, I remember speaking from this podium in January, warning people that we've got to start circling our wagons because the federal climate is not going to be conducive to what we're used to and expect. This is starting to do that. We've got to do it at the grassroots, local level, and we're in Massachusetts, where the state he hates the most.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Gabe Cohen-Glynnick. I'm an organizer with Neighbor-to-Neighbor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to also appreciate Counsel McLean for bringing this issue forward and taking the initiative to make this statement, and to the council for taking up this issue. Appreciate Jason for speaking for the first time at a council meeting about something very personal and important, and it's difficult and intimidating. And, and, yeah, I think just a lot of the, the youth in, in our group and the folks that we organize with would really appreciate this ordinance being voted into action of supporting them and who they want to be, as Jason put so well. So I just wanted to voice that appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone in favor of this? Anyone else in favor?
Mr. President, I have a...
You have a letter?
I did receive a letter from Samantha Lambert at 20 Emerald Drive in favor.
If we could read it?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Samantha Lambert, and I reside at 20 Emerald Drive in Lynn, Mass. I am writing today in support of Counsel McLean's ordinance affirming and protecting reproductive and gender-affirming care in Lynn. We must be crystal clear reproductive and gender-affirming care is health care. There is no other way to define it. To deny or criminalize this care is to attack an individual's right to health care. I applaud Counsel McLean for taking this a step further and building on the work of the Commonwealth by strengthening and amplifying Lynn's commitment to the care of all Lynn residents. I ask that you please support passage of this ordinance. Many thanks for your service, Samantha Lambert.
All right, so anyone else in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition of this? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Come on up to the podium.
Good evening. Brendan Higgins, 54 Herschel Street. I am here to define the terms man and woman using medical terminology. What is a man? A man is characterized as having been born with male genitalia. These genitalia include two testes. These testes produce what we know as sperm and a hormone called testosterone. A man is born with X and Y chromosomes, thus giving him male characteristics. A man cannot bear children. If you are born a man, you will always be a man. What is a woman? A woman is characterized as having female genitalia. These genitalia include ovaries. These ovaries produce what we know as eggs and a hormone called estrogen. A woman has two chromosomes, thus giving her female characteristics. Only a woman can bear children. If you were born a woman, you will always be a woman. In America, we have freedom of expression. Live their life, live your life the way you want to live it. However, your freedom of expression stops when you force us to change our use of the English language and force us to deny reality in order to appease your ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council? Counsel McLean?
I do want to thank the Director of Public Health, Lisa Tobin. I want to thank Attorney La Mano and also Brian Fields, Chair of the Public Health Commission Committee for helping me get to this point with this ordinance. All things being considered, I really would like for my council members to support me in passing this ordinance, motion to approve.
Second. Second. Do we have a motion? A second? I think we have to read, we need to read the ordinance. If the clerk would read it, please.
With the changes?
Attorney Lamanna, we have to read them with the changes or read the changes after?
Right. Since this was advertised a week ago Monday, there were meetings with the Public Health Director, Lisa Tobin, myself, and Chief Reddy had some minor recommendations to tweak this. It was forwarded over to Counsel McLean, who gave the green light, and I want to commend Counsel McLean to take the lead on this. Much of the summer was reviewing ordinances from other cities. So, there are some amendments that, that the Health Director and the Chief Police have recommended from what was advertised a week ago Monday.
So, we'll read, we'll read the ordinance as written and then add the amendments? Or do you want the amendments?
Just the amendments because the...
Just read the amendment?
Just the amendments.
Just the amendments. Okay. Thank you. Clerk would read the amendments?
In Section B entitled "Definitions of a City Agent," strike the words "any contractor for the city of Lynn" while a contract between the city of Lynn and said contractor is in effect and any recipient of city funding, grants, awards, or appropriations. In Section B entitled "Definitions," strike the definition of pregnancy-related services as those terms do not appear in the ordinance and therefore do not require a definition. Strike Section D entitled "Safe Access to Protected Health Care in its Entirety" and replace it with the following. All information related to reproductive health care services or gender-affirming health care services for any individual, including individuals who are not residents of the city or the Commonwealth, held by any city employer or official, is and shall be kept confidential and shall not be released or disclosed to the extent permitted by law to any third party absent the order of a court or competent jurisdiction. No city official or employee may furnish information, assistance, or aid, and no city resources, materials, or funds shall be used to facilitate or aid any person, entity, or jurisdiction seeking to prohibit, criminalize, sanction, or bring or prosecute any criminal or civil action against or otherwise interfere with any individual, entity, or carrier that seeks, receives, causes, aids, and access to, aids, or abets, or provides, or attempts to, or intends to seek, receive, cause, aid, in access to, aid, or abet, or provide reproductive health care services or gender-affirming health care services if such services are legally protected health care activities. All city employees and officials shall comply with any state and federal law or regulation pertaining to the reproductive and gender-affirming health care, not otherwise explicitly stated in the ordinance. Strike Section E entitled "Fair Access to Reproductive Health and Gender-affirming Health Care Information in its Entirety" and replace it with the following. Upon request, the city shall share information from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts about how to access reproductive health care services and gender-affirming health care services. The city's role is only to pass along information that the Commonwealth has already provided, such as documents about limited services, pregnancy centers, reproductive health providers, and any advisories or notices related to these services. The Health Department shall provide on its official city website a list of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health Sexual and Reproductive Health Program for as long as the link is made available by the state as the Commonwealth. Provided documents on gender-affirming care is made available through the Mass.gov website. Strike in Section F entitled "Complaints," the words "the department's Internal Affairs Division," and replace those words with the chief of police or of his designee. Strike Section G entitled "Reporting in its Entirety." And that's it.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve with the amendments. Second.
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Counsel Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the only out member of the LGBT community of this council, I would like to personally, would like to thank Counselor McLean, Counselor Brian Field, and Attorney Lamanna, Lisa Nair, Nair Tobin, Lisa Tobin, the mayor's office, for religiously reviewing this and cons, I know for a fact that there were gazillion of phone calls and meetings regards to this and for coming up with, with these amendments. And I'm very proud to second Counselor McLean's motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion with the council? Roll call.
Counsel Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Aminy?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meji Madry?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Motion carries. Public hearings to be set down.
We have petition of John Marshall, 11 Vieira Drive, Peabody, for permission to build an accessory structure on his property that is partially in Lynn. Petition of Jose Perez Valdez, 44 Murray Street, for an all-alcohol license at a new restaurant located at 680 Western Ave. And, oops, sorry. And we have the following petitions to be set down from National Grid, Bel Air Street and 37 Dorinda Circle to install a joint-owned pole, Bel Air Street and 37 Dorinda Circle to install conduit to provide service, 21 Oxford Street to install two joint-owned poles for service, Oxford and Buffham Street to install conduit to a new heavy-duty handhole, Oxford and Buffham Street to install conduit from the handhole to the proppant line, Lawton and Rogers Ave to install conduit to connect overhead transformers on pole number 19, and Fairmont Ave and Wonderland Terrace in Saugus to install two joint-owned poles for service to a new development.
What's the wish of the council?
Set down.
Set them down. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Set them down. Committee, actually, hold on a second before you do the committees. I think we have to go back to council reappointments, right? So, we skipped...
I was so wrapped up in the mayor's appointments, I forgot about you guys.
I caught that. Just wanted to put that out. So, we have the council reappointments for our reappointments. So, if the clerk would read them.
And we have three, reappointments to the Pine Grove Cemetery Commission. Arthur Dulong, 127 Gardner Street, his term will expire on September 30th, 2028. Ralph Tyler, 214 Chatham Street, his term will expire on September 30th, 2028. And Mary Wright, 196 Locust Street, her term will expire on September 30th, 2028.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Aminy?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Meji Madry?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Reappointed. Okay. Committees, Committee on Public Property and Parks, Counsel Jakudas.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
A motion approved. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Want to wake up now? Almost done, all right? Okay. Committee on Veterans, Counsel McLean. It's getting dark, I know. It's like, it's, it's, you know...
We have a unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm, I'm on it today. I'm, I'm on it. I didn't make any slip-ups yet. Committee on Licensing, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a unanimous vote, and we would like to put a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Net?
Yes, Mr. President. It was a unanimous vote of the committee and make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Will the clerk read the items from Ways and Means?
We have one transfer laid over from the last meeting, September 23rd, $16,808.13 from ISD expense for prior bill. There are certified orders, $150,000 to the Health Department for the FY26 MVP Action Grant, $24,847 to the Fire Department for the FY26 9/11 Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant, $102,680 to the Police Department for the FY26 Jail Arrest Diversion Grant, $315,050 to the Police Department for the FY26 Behavioral Health Intervention Program, $4,000 to the Health Department by the Phoenix Food Hub. The following orders. Order that his Honored the Mayor is hereby authorized to execute a MOU with the MBTA and all other necessary documentation to allow for replacement of traffic lights on Broad Street and Lewis Street to provide more efficient bus use along this corridor. Order that his Honored the Mayor is authorized to execute a MOU with the Secretary of State to purchase software licenses to insist in conducting the census. The city is hereby authorized to enter into five-year contract to own the ARG GIS software for a period of five years. Order that his Honored the Mayor is hereby authorized to execute a site access agreement with property owners in the city of Lynn and Western and Sampson Engineers, Inc., for the purpose of testing and cleaning contaminated land and soil on private property in a form substantially similar to the attached agreement. Further order that the city solicitor is authorized to amend the terms of the attached site point agreement if needed to effectuate the purpose of that order on an individual basis as required by negotiations with the property owner. And finally, we have the election warrant. Order that the city clerk be directed to advertise meetings of the qualified voters of the city of Lynn to be held in several polling places designated by the warrant for the local election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Votes will be cast for mayor, councils at large, ward council, and school committee. Sample ballots for all wards and precincts are available on the city website and in the election office for public viewing. The ward and precinct locations are Ward 1-1, Shoemaker School, Ward 1-2, 3, and 4, Sisson School, Ward 2 All, St. Pius, Ward 3 All, Marshall Middle School, Ward 4 All, Harrington School, Ward 5 All, Lynn Tech Annex, Ward 6 All, Lynn Tech Field House, and Ward 7, Breed Junior High.
All right. So, a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Allen Sugg?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Jakudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field absent, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Aminy?[1592.66]